Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting of the Sacramento Housing Authority and Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Harris.
Has anyone shown up today?
Councilmember Harris.
Do we have technology problems?
Councilmember Harris is present.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Ashby is expected momentarily. Councilmember Warren is expected momentarily. And Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here. Good afternoon, everyone. We have several important items under our authority as the Housing Authority and the City Council. Do we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance for Housing Authority meetings? Okay. Let's all rise, please, and I will choose myself to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, again, good afternoon, everyone, and good afternoon to members of the public who are watching. Let us begin with the consent calendar. Do members have or staff have any issues or questions on the consent calendar?
I'll move approval, Mayor.
I second Mayor.
Moved by Councilmember Hanson, seconded by Councilmember Carr. Is there any public testimony on the consent calendar?
I have no public testimony on consent.
All right, let us call the roll then, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinberg.
Aye.
And Councilmember Ashby and Warren are absent.
Okay, thank you. Let's now move to the public hearings and item four regarding the Mirasol Village project. Our executive director, LaChelle Dozier. Ms. Dozier?
Yes. We'll have our presenter, Ann Nichols. She's going to go ahead and give the presentation.
Okay, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Ann Nichols, Management Analyst with SHRA. In January 2018, council approved a loan commitment of $14 million in choice neighborhoods implementation, housing trust funds, and housing authority successor agency funds. And in September 2019, council also approved the issuance of up to $40 million in mortgage revenue bonds, all for the development of the Mirasol Block A project. The report before you is for the approval of the re-TEPRA and the final loan and bond documents. The closing is scheduled in December and construction to begin shortly thereafter. Staff is available to address any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, I have no callers on this item.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the members? Vice Mayor Harris, Councilmember Hanson, anybody?
Yes, Mayor. Just, I'd like to point out that things are moving along quite well with Mirasol Village. It's been a long-term project and kudos to SHRA and everybody who's worked on this project. It's actually being built and that's very gratifying. Definitely in support.
That's great. Great job, yes. We were out there a couple of weeks ago and it's really, you can see the vision. Let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, we need to open and close the hearing.
Oh.
I will open and close the public hearing and move the item, Mayor.
And this is second.
Yes, by Councilmember Jennings.
And then seconded by Councilmember Harris.
Very good. All right, now let's call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinberg.
Aye.
And Councilmember Ashby and Warren are absent.
Okay, thank you. Let's move now to item number five. This is an amendment to essentially the CARES Act, what I call the spreadsheet, the $62 million spreadsheet that we approved about a month plus ago. Why don't we, again, hand it over to Ms. Dozier for a report and discussion and a vote.
You mentioned, Mayor, we did get the authorization from the council to move forward with the appropriation of those funds, and now we're coming back with the official actions that put those into place. And so we have Celia here is going to do the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Celia Ineges, Program Manager here in the Federal Programs Division. As you are aware, the CARES Act was approved in March and as such allocated the authority to HUD to then push down funding to local jurisdictions. They have done that in three different rounds. The first round included community development block grant, emergency solutions grant, and housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. And after the direction provided approval on the COVID-19 homeless response plan in April came along and approved, and council approved that action plan amendment. So today you're approving funding for the second and third rounds. The emergency solutions grant, which was allocated to local jurisdictions in June, and then the third round of community development block grant allocated to jurisdictions in September. So, and in August and September, we provided a specific direction how to allocate these two funds. So for the emergency solutions grant, today, funding will be allocated to outreach and to emergency shelters, as well as to program administration. The remaining 7.1 million in funds will be allocated in a subsequent project-specific report later in, we anticipate later in October. The second round, third round, excuse me, of community development block grant will be allocated, 2 million will be allocated to the Sacramento Emergency Rental Assistance Program. There is a portion that is unallocated and we will work with city staff and the community to identify appropriate activities, again, to continue to support the negative impacts of COVID-19 on Sacramento residents. And also, we're allocating some funds for program administration. So that concludes my presentation. Again, we're just implementing the direction that council has provided in September, August and September, and I'm available for any questions.
So, this all looks very good. I just, for clarity, though, I just want to, I work off of this spreadsheet, which formed the basis of, again, this comprehensive sources and uses strategy, investment strategy, which amounted to, again, $62 million, and it was contingent on SHRA being successful with the city, with the state to get the Project Home Key funds, which you were successful. Congratulations. So, what I have seen in revised spreadsheet, I just want to relate it to the report where it breaks it down in much more of a narrative form. What is different from what we approved back six or so weeks ago when we went forward with the comprehensive plan?
I'm going to take it in big, sorry, the big chunks. So I believe the flexible housing program was, which is essentially rental assistance for folks that are coming out of the motels. That was originally going to be funded through ESG, City ESG. Now that will be funded by County ESG. So there is no, that remains the same. The other big difference is the SARAH program, the Sacramento Emergency Rental Assistance Program, would have been funded through ESG. Subsequent to that meeting at the council in August, the CDBG came out, and that is a much better fit. It's more flexible. And so staff have been working with and getting direction from HUD, but they really feel that the CDBG is really the more appropriate funding source. And so that is one of the other changes. And then, of course, the what is then available, what was freed up, would then, is now available for the Home Key project. And again, that will come before you later in October. So those are the big, the changes to that report you have, to the spreadsheet.
So the Home Key projects are going to come back to us at the end of October with a plan for how we fund one or two hotels. And as I understand it, that may include and contemplate some Prop 63, some Mental Health Services Act funding as well. But that's for late October, is that correct?
Yes. You will hear later on today the funding for one of those particular Home Key projects, which is the La Mancha.
Okay.
And then we would come back later with the BURC.
I got it. Okay, so you're separating the two hotel projects, one today and one in late October. Okay, thank you for the clarity. Councilmember Gara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to go back to the, in the staff report where you're recommending using the $2 million for CDBG funds to the SARAH program. And I'd like to get, I'd like to make sure that we clear up this issue about expanding to make sure that all our immigrants are eligible for this program, those who are in greatest need and obviously need our qualification here. But maybe if, what I'd like to get is clarification that you coordinated with the city attorney on this question and making sure that we have maximum eligibility for this program. Has that happened?
It is my understanding we're going to have our agency council speak to that.
Yes, and as Brad is coming forward, he did have an opportunity to reach out and have discussions with the city attorney and their office as well. You received a memo regarding that.
Hello, Brad Nacano, SHRA Housing Authority General Counsel. So I'm sorry, could you?
Yes, did you, what I'd like to make sure is that we're, that we have, that you've coordinated with our city attorney about the ability to have all immigrants in Sacramento be eligible for the SARAH program?
Yeah, so we have coordinated with the city attorney, and I believe that a memo should have been delivered to you shortly before, you know, this 2:00 PM meeting that had started. So if you haven't got a chance to take a look at it, we apologize for the late delivery. But yes, we have worked together. There are some things that city council and the Housing Authority Board should consider within that memo. But the aim of the program, and I've spoken with our staff here, the aim of the program is to get as many applicants as it can. There are, there are no eligibility restrictions placed upon the application, and I believe that selection will be by lottery. Is that correct?
By priority, that's a, and then lottery.
Yeah, okay.
Good. And so the clarifying point was that because you are working with the landlord specifically, all immigrants that meet the financial need are eligible for this program?
No. It's kind of a, I know that that's what the City of Los Angeles is doing. The City of San Diego is actually taking a slightly different approach. And so I'm not trying to, I guess, avoid the question. It's just because this is more, because this I would consider is more of attorney-client provision, legal advice, it's difficult for me to, I guess, go over with you in this public forum.
That's fine. Mr. Mayor, you know, I appreciate all the work that's been done here. Appreciate all the assistance that's been moving forward. I'll go ahead and move the staff report with also direction that the SHRA staff and legal counsel and the city attorney team report back to the council, either through closed session or where appropriate, to make sure that we have the maximum amount of eligible applicants for the SARAH program. The, and the last piece of direction is that they also work with the community stakeholders as in the implementation of this program, to make sure we get maximum participation.
And Councilmember Gara, if you have any specific questions after taking a look at, you know, the supplement to the memo that just went out, feel free to give me a call, and I'd be more than happy to chat with you about any questions you might have, or any other council member for that matter.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to open and close the public hearing and move the item?
That was my motion to open and close the public hearing, move the item with staff direction, Mr. Mayor, to make sure that we get a fine point on this legal question.
I was just double checking.
And I seconded it, Mayor. But would like to just ask a question or follow-up.
Go ahead, please.
Brad, I know that we received a memo. I'm not going to describe it, but I did read it. I would just say that I would like to support Councilmember Gara's direction that we make the program as broadly accessible as possible, including to people who may not be documented. Since the landlord is the recipient of the aid, I think that is something that, you know, if the council's willing, we can accept a little bit of risk on. But I also encourage you to work with the staff from other cities around the country who are also kind of confronting a similar question, how to thread that needle. And if possible, find out whether or not they've received any direction from the state or federal government in relation to the question, because while regulations haven't been issued on this particular point, I imagine the question's been asked. So, you know, let's do as much as possible for people who are very vulnerable and be prudent about the risk, but not be so risk averse, we don't try to do what we can to help. Yep. voting.
Okay, we do have one caller, apparently, so.
May we have our first caller? May we have our caller on this item?
Okay, well.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, council. I just wanted to basically give some points of information. This meeting started late, and there were some feedbacks that wanted to go to the consent calendar that was unable to do so. I'm concerned about some of the procedural aspects of how we're conducting meetings with public comment and public notice. I am also willing to write information to the staff or whoever I need to in order to give more of a public perspective of what's going on. I know just now I didn't announce myself. My name is Daphne Harris, and I just wanted to basically make sure that the council is aware that the public needs to have more of an engagement on what's going on. And that's a concern for me right now, just watching the procedures on both of the meetings that I've participated in this afternoon. And I'd like to make sure that it doesn't happen during the city council meeting at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
I'm not sure I understood the caller's point. I've had a hard time hearing.
The caller has hung up.
Okay, let's call the roll on the item, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. We do have one more item here, and that is item number six relating to the La Mancha project.
Yes, as I just previously mentioned, we are now coming forward to get the approvals for our first project, Home Key, which is La Mancha, and we've named it La Mancha. So I have Susan, who's going to do the presentation.
Good afternoon, Susan Vizi with SHRA. This afternoon, we are asking for the council's approvals associated with funding for the acquisition, moderate rehabilitation, and operations of the La Mancha project, a project which will provide 100 studio apartments for homeless households at risk of contracting COVID-19. As background, the state of California determined to spend a portion of its federal coronavirus relief funds on a program to convert motels into housing for homeless, a population particularly susceptible to contracting the coronavirus. These federal funds must be expended by December 30th. Therefore, the timeline for submitting an application to the state acquiring motel and preparing it for permanent housing is extremely tight. Mercy Housing and SHRA were successful in receiving an award of funds for this purpose through what the state calls the Home Key Program. Approximately $14.5 million have been awarded for the acquisition of the 124-room extended stay hotel called Wood Springs Suites, located at 7789 La Mancha Way in District 8, including funding for a portion of the rehabilitation and initial operations. The overall budget for the project is approximately $22.5 million, which includes 5 million for up to 10 years of operating and services. To fill the funding gap and take advantage of this federal and state funding source, state staff are recommending the allocation of $2 million of city coronavirus relief funds, approximately 2 million in homeless housing assistance and prevention program, or HAP funds, and approximately 1.6 million in community development block grant, or CDBG funds. The CDBG funding also requires the approval of an amendment to the city's action plan related to its federal entitlement programs. These funds had already been allocated for a motel conversion by the city council. This request provides the specific project to receive funding. In addition, we will be requesting the county board of supervisors to allocate approximately 2.3 million in Mental Health Services Act, or MHSA, funds to support building rehabilitation. The project includes the acquisition of the Wood Springs Suites, which is a relatively new property built in 2009 with kitchenettes and full-size refrigerators in all units. 100 rooms will be converted to permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness, and the remaining 24 ground floor rooms will be converted into a lobby, reception area, eight case management offices, two property management offices, two meeting rooms, and common area restrooms. The work scope for the residences includes modification of 10 units to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act and moderate rehabilitation. At the time of acquisition, SHRA and the developer will enter into a 55-year regulatory agreement on the property in accordance with the Home Key Program funding rules. The 100 studio units will be restricted at or below 30% of area median income. The developer and management agent, Mercy Housing, is well-known to SHRA and the community and is a significant provider of permanent supportive housing. It is anticipated that up to 40 units will be restricted to the MHSA funding program, and supportive services for those 40 households will be provided by the County of Sacramento Department of Health Services. Mercy Housing will also be providing and coordinating additional supportive services. This afternoon, we are requesting approval for final allocation of Home Key, CDBG, coronavirus relief funding, and HAP funds, along with the amendment to the city's action plan to require, that is required to allocate CDBG funds for the purpose of rehabilitation. In conclusion, staff from SHRA and Mercy Housing are available to answer any questions you may have about this project.
Okay. Are there questions here about this? I want to just say I'm really pleased, even though I know that the county did not bid for a Home Key project itself, that we are continuing our collaboration with them, especially on the Mental Health Services Act, which, as you know, I have some pride in. But the fact that that money is coming over from the county to help us in the city, when we know that mental health is a big piece of addressing systemic homelessness, I think is a really good advance here. And it wasn't, at least part of the initial presentation, and I know as you're scurrying the SHRA team to figure out the financing for these complicated projects, including the services and the operations, that continuing to be creative like this and partnering with the county and with the source of funding that is readily available and intended to be used for this purpose, I just think is a very good step here. So, thank you. Who else?
I have a comment.
Yes.
So this hotel, Wood Springs Suite, is located right off Highway 99 and Mack Road. It is just south of the DMV offices that are located there, and also south of Elder Creek, which we have a few homeless campers who managed to leave a lot of trash and junk there. I've talked to all of our neighborhood associations. We are all in support of this site. The site kind of differs from what we were originally trying to do, that is find two to five acres of concrete pad that was already laid. Those sites are few and far between in a built-up city like Sacramento. But this site is a perfect ideal location. It's separated by a seven or eight acre field in front of Wood Springs Suite. There is no park, there is no playground, there is no school within the immediate vicinity. Plus, SHRA has committed to me, and I want them to commit again after I finish speaking here, LaChelle, that we will give priority to, one, those people who are camping out in the creek behind Wood Springs Suite, to get them off the street and into living conditions that will facilitate them becoming independent. And I understand that everyone that we contact who's living in the creek is going to be a good prospect for moving into Wood Springs Suites. But I do want to commit that we will prioritize and give preference to those people who are living in that creek right now. The second thing that you've assured me of, and I need your assurance in front of the whole council, is that we will prioritize those people who are staying in the shelter next to the Pennell Center, and those people who are eligible to have somewhat independent living are moved out of that shelter. Those ladies go out of the shelter and into Wood Springs Suites. And the third preference that you have already mentioned in our conversation was to veterans, our homeless veterans who are on the street, who are capable of living in this environment to get their feet on the ground, that we can get them off the street and into a place where we can get them into independent living as soon as possible. But first of all, I want you to assure me of those three things in front of the council.
So as we discussed, and you've made it very clear about those particular priorities, and we will be working with community-based organizations to try and address those individuals who are living in that particular area, which is, you know, behind Wood Springs and also Metalview. The good thing about this is that it is immediate housing, so this isn't transitional. So people who are in other situations can actually move in, and this will be their permanent location. So we're very excited about that, and so that's a good fit for all of the priorities that you have established.
Yeah. Well, we're in full support of this, contrary to popular belief that council members will accept temporary housing and shelters in their districts. I have seen it in other districts, and this one is totally acceptable to District 8, and totally accepted, acceptable to the community members, not just me, but the people who live here. So given the right conditions, the right circumstances, the right locations, I think we can develop a series of these, provided we have the continuing flow of resources. If there are no other people commenting on this, Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Okay, is there any public testimony on the item?
I'll second it.
There are no callers on that item.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Warren to open and close the public hearing. Let's call the roll on the item, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby? Mayor Pro Tem Ashby? Mayor Pro Tem Ashby? We'll come back. Councilmember Warren?
Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, does somebody have a comment? Sorry, we may be.
You appear muted.
We have a little technology snafu.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
I assume we're, we're taking the vote then? Do you want to call the vote first? Because that didn't happen officially on the record.
Thank you. The vote, motion was made by Councilmember Carr, second by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Mayor, may I make a quick comment?
Yes, Councilmember Jennings has a comment. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just want to say once again, great job to Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency on finding this location and bringing another 100 beds into our community, much-needed bid. And I also want to just acknowledge Councilmember Carr, he and I share the Valley High community, so I'm 100% behind him, and also know that everyone is in support of this project. And I, I totally agree with his priorities of getting those that are living in the creek, those that are in the shelter next to Pinnell, and of course, our homeless veterans. So I just want to say great job to both of them, and acknowledge the great work that they're doing, and that especially S.H.R.A. is doing in Sacramento. So, great job, I'm looking forward to supporting this, this effort.
Thank you. Let's call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Good job, S.H.R.A., and thank you, Councilmember Carr, yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Councilmember Schneer?
Aye.
Councilmember Getta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
150%, yes.
Councilmember Carr?
156%, yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Very good.
Good, good, good work, Councilman Carr, good work, S.H.R.A., and it's more opportunity and more people inside and housed, that's what we want. That's great. All right, is there anything else to come before the joint meeting of the Housing Authority and the city council? I don't see anything. Members, we do.
Mayor, I have a question under the executive director's report, if we can get to that.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could get a quick update on Meadowview, Michelle, if that's possible, and also, I, I found the weekly reports on Capitol Park to be really informative, and, and was wondering if we could do the same thing with the Meadowview shelter?
Absolutely. We are doing that with EBH, which is at The Grove for the Transitional Age Youth, and then we're also going to do that for Meadowview, so you'll start to see those every single Friday. And would you just like a quick update in terms of where we are with Meadowview right now?
Please.
So we are moving forward with moving ladies into the shelter. I believe at this time, we have about 12, about 12 women who are there. Our maximum capacity is 50. We've been working with the community-based organizations to make sure that they understand how the referral process works, and how they can work with and identify other homeless women who live in that particular area, so that we can get them into the shelter. So that report, you'll start to see those numbers grow.
And in the report, and I know this was important to many of us who are doing this work, but in the report, will it show where the residents are coming from? So like the 12 you have now, are they from the immediate area? So if we can track that, I think as we move into Broadway and WX, that's going to be very important, too, for some of the commitments we've made to the community.
Absolutely. Well, we will definitely take a look at including that information, and, and at least tracking it, for sure.
Thank you.
Can I have a question of Michelle?
Yes.
Michelle, under the county's health order, what's the maximum capacity of the shelter?
The maximum capacity at the shelter, in terms of how many people can be there, is 100, but we're at 50 because of social distancing, so we're at half capacity.
Is, is, did the county health order issue any guidance on dormitory-type living situations?
I would have to get back to you, I don't, I don't know that they did.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
We were just doing the six feet, you know, social distancing to the extent that we could.
Yeah, they may have issued some guidance on dormitory-type shelters.
And are we doing any testing of folks in the shelter?
Okay, are there other comments? There are no public comments on items not on the agenda. If there's nothing else to come before the Housing Authority and the city council, we do have a closed session at 4:00, as, sitting as the city council, and then the city council will meet in public session at 5:00 PM.
To reiterate, closed session is at 4:30.
I'm sorry, closed session is at 4:30, not at 4:00. So take a longer break, everybody.
You can still come at 4:00 if you want to.
4:30, 4:30 is good. Thank you all very much, we'll see you later this afternoon. We are adjourned.